So with that, we start and we open up with Forest Park Middle School. And I know that Principal Tommy Mazza is in the house. And he's accompanied by Jaquan Murray and Julie Nguyen. Come on down. Jaquan, you're all dooted up. You look good tonight. Sharp. Bright and shadowy. Ladies first. Beautiful hair. Now, you're gonna have, that's for the viewing audience, the mics. So you're gonna have to speak loud and proud so we can hear you. Thank you, my dear. No, don't be nervous at all. Right from the heart.
Hi, my name is Julie Wang and this is Jaquan Murray. We are eighth grade students from Forest Park Middle School. I'm honored to be here with you all. Recently, Forest Park Middle School has started something new called Kickboard, which my team of the eighth grade is testing out before it is released to entire school. Kickboard is a computer program that tracks students' behaviors, both positive and negative. For the positive things we do, students are able to earn money for incentives in school. The teachers are able to log their behaviors live while we are in class in front of them. We start on Monday in the statistics so far grade. It gives off a pie chart where green represents all the good deeds we've done. The red represents the bad or negative. Purple represents calls to administration. And blue represents neutral things like passes to the bathroom or the nurse. Any teacher can access the website where the program is held. This program is meant to replace stamps, which also saves paper for our PBIS events, with the money you can gain from being a good student. No, it's not real money, merely virtual money. You can earn money with just following the school's model by staying focused, prepared, motivated, and safe, FPMS. But you can lose money by violating the school's rules or motto. Fortunately, as a parent or guardian, you can log into the website and check your child's behavior. Doing so will increase the chances of students focusing and going to school prepared, which our school doesn't seem to have a big issue with. We all know students, just like me, are competitive. We will compare the amount of money we earn each week just to see who has more, which means the more money you have, the more good things you've done. One other incentive we can spend our money on are dress some days. The one we'll have this Friday will cost students $125. With the start of this program, I predict behavioral problems will be solved just like that when this is implemented throughout my school. Thank you very much, and here's Jaquan.
Nice job, Julie. We also have Lauren Holtz, Hots? Or Holt, Hot? Holtz. Assistant Principal, Grade A, too. Thank you. Jaquan, you're up. And you're looking tight tonight. Looks sharp.
Hello, I'm Jaquan Murray. And I would like to start by saying thank you for allowing us to represent our school. I'm here to talk about one of the great things Forest Park Middle School has done this year. Recently, the eighth grade honors students participated in National History Day competition. National History Day is an event that students from grades six through eighth participate in and give information about a topic they've chosen. A group of about 40 students from Forest Park traveled to Ocam, Mass. to participate in regionals competition and present their projects. Our students competed against hundreds of schools from across Massachusetts, and the Forest Park groups all placed in the top 25 percent. My group's project was titled Taking a Stand Against Concussions in the NFL. This project was based on how the NFL denied that any of their players had concussions as a result of playing professional football. Our research showed that most of the NFL's players suffered concussions and did not report having any because they did not want to give up their football careers. From our findings, we concluded that not reporting concussions will lead to serious health problems and even death. By participating in National History Day, I think it helped the students in my school to learn a variety of new things and travel to new places. It's also helped us to understand how research is done and how to gather statistics. These skills will help us in high school and beyond. In closing, thank you Mayor Sarno and school committee members for allowing us to speak today.
You nailed it. Good job. There you go, Jaquan. Good job, Tommy.
It's real about the concussions, too.
Oh, I know. Just Nut South is in the house. And it's Abil Abiti? Okay. And joined by Sully, Principal Danny Sullivan's here. And Mr. Gallagher is also here, student coordinator. Tell the poet laureate Marty, your brother we said hello to. You're looking sharp, too. Thank you. The floor is yours.
Hi, my name is Abil Abiti. Thank you for having me here. When I first came over here from a third world country named Eritrea in Africa, I didn't know any English, which made it hard for me to communicate. But I worked hard and studied hard, and now I am one of the top students at Chestnut Celebrated Middle School South. Coming to America was a marvelous thing because I didn't have opportunities like I do in Chestnut South. For instance, the school paid for us to get a one-year membership to the Boys and Girls Club of Springfield. There we do activities like basketball, art, and business, which I am involved in. The school also made outstanding field trips to entertaining places like Sam Valley Beach, Bounce, Enter Skate 91, and Ice Skating Rinks. Another thing that made an impact on me is when we went to visit different colleges like Springfield College, Smith College, Elms College, UMass, and American International College. One of the best things that I'm involved in right now is the flight program. Me and two other students from Chestnut South head down to Smith College in a bus with other students, and there we learn all about planes and how to fly them. At the end of the program, we will be able to fly a small plane from Northampton Airport to Orange Municipal Airport with a co-pilot. At Chestnut South, we are like a family. We stick together no matter what. We also help students who are in need of assistance. When we see somebody doing the wrong thing, we correct them nicely and show them the right thing to do. My first year in Chestnut was a little difficult, but throughout the school year, I found my way and made some remarkable new friends. Chestnut South has shaped me into a person everybody's proud of, especially my parents. They expect me to do really good in school, and with the help of my astonishing teachers, I'm doing fantastic. I'm glad I spent my middle school year in Chestnut South. It all boils down to that Chestnut South has been a great experience for me, and I am very thankful for Mr. Gallagher, my principal, and my teachers, my counselors, for making all these great chances for me and for every other student in Chestnut Celebrated Middle School South. Thank you.
Nice job. My alma mater is in the house. It's Kylie Middle School, Efrain Cologne. Pritzy Adarich? Pritzy's on here. We talked about that movie already. Come on up. And accompanied by Otilio Alvarado, Assistant Principal, right back over there.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and school committee members. My name is Efrain Cologne, and this is my classmate, Pritzy Adarich. We are here to tell you about the amazing things that have been, happened this year at Kylie Middle School.
Our teachers have been working hard all year to implement the school-wide priorities. All students are working to demonstrate proficiency and their ability to explain their thinking and demonstrate the understanding. Our teachers continue to increase the rigor in their classrooms and have been implementing daily writing tasks to ensure students have ample opportunities to write. Success is being measured by interim assessments and monthly constructive responses. A school-wide academic intervention program has been put in place, which is data-driven, product-based, and yields improvement in student outcomes. All students have incorporated consistent routines and procedures within the classroom assignment and learning, which is very important to the students.
Nice job, Pritzy.
This year, we started a program called Kylie Leaders. I was selected by my classmates to be the Kylie Leader for my data group. I hope to make, I help make decisions regarding eighth grade student PBIS incentives. One of the projects that we have been working on is our Kylie Band incentive. With good behavior and following the Kylie Way, students can earn a wristband that comes with some great incentive. One of my favorite incentives is the VIP area at lunch. In the VIP area, we get to have lunch first, listen to music, and play games. This incentive has really motivated our students to work hard and focus on being prepared, being polite, and being safe.
Good job, Efrain.
In my three years at Kylie, I feel that I have grown a great deal as just a student and a person. My teachers have been, have done an excellent job teaching me, motivating me, and preparing for me for the future. They have always been there for me through good times and when I have struggled. At Kylie, I feel like we are one big family, and I will definitely miss all of my students, all of my teachers, and my classmates when I move on to high school. I feel like they have put me in a position to achieve all of my goals and reach my full potential in high school and beyond.
As an eighth grader at Kylie, I am looking forward to the many end-of-the-year events that are coming up. We will be taking a trip to High Meadows and having a semi-formal dance in May. We will also have our Step Up Ceremony, which I can't wait to enjoy with all my friends.
As a Kylie student, I am proud to say that we are recently able to raise $2,125 for the Chosen Miracle Network. We would like to recognize Mr. Lorenzano for his hard work in leading this effort and for all of the great things he does to support us at school and the community.
We have brought some Kylie Band with us tonight, and we would like to give them to Mayor Sarno, Mr. Warwick, and the school committee members so that they can be VIPs the next time they come to visit.
Come on down. All right. I was at Kylie from 1975 to 1978. You found my picture? Did I draw a mustache on it or anything like that? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah, we like that T-shirt. Listen, Efrain, I'm gonna put it on right now. How do you like that?
It's probably like the 60s. The 60s, maybe? Thank you.
We were the Catamouts, Kylie Catamouts. Still the Catamouts, right?
I think they still are.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, and have a great night.
Thank you. Great job, kids. Okay, Vanticle Academy is in the house. Tatiana Almeida, Ariana Silva, Darian Cruz, Jordan Mendez, accompanied by Megan Callahan, Assistant Principal. Come on down, kids.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and the distinguished members of our school committee. My name is Jordan Mendez, and I am joined by Tatiana Almeida, Ariana Silva, and Adrian Cruz. And we represent Vanticle Academy. For the past couple of days, we've been taking our ELA MCAS. Although testing is stressful, we put most of our effort towards the open response and multiple choice. If we weren't, if it weren't for our amazing ELA teachers, Mr. Donnelly, Mr. Villeges, Ms. Mazzi, and Mr. Gale, we wouldn't be able to feel confident about our MCAS.
Good job.
Here at Vanticle Academy, we give students an opportunity to attend different occasions throughout the year, including college field trips and PBIS events. Our Student Council, with the help of our administration team, has put together celebrations to honor our students' hard work, such as honors breakfast, school dances, game day, and spear week. We are also planning our eighth grade graduation ceremony, semi-formal, and our end-of-the-year High Meadows Field Trip for the month of June. So you may be wondering how a student might earn their way to these fun events. Will they have to follow our VSA Way?
You know, Principal Francesca's here. Bobby's here also, who I greeted when I came in. So, no, very happy to have you here, Principal. Thank you. My miscue there.
The VSA Way is comprised of many rules to keep our students safe. We have many procedures that students must follow daily. To keep our students safe during transitions, we make sure everyone gets to their correct classes. This prevents chaotic behavior. We also keep our students focused on their work by having our staff and teachers help our students not, to not give up and succeed at accomplishing their goals and to help them plan for college and beyond.
Good job.
As we look to our future in the coming months, we carry with us the lessons that we have learned at VSA. We anxiously await our high school assignments and look forward to what the next four years has in store for us. We've heard from four high schools, Central, Ponnum, SciTech, and Commerce, about the many decisions we need to make to succeed in life.
At VSA, we care for one another like family, and that's what makes us a part of the VSA Way.
Nice job. Thank you. Just in case, I wanna double check because we see a number of principals that are here. Any other schools that were not on the list? That's great that you're here and support. Very, very good. Oh, Duggan is here to speak? We, oh, you know what? Don't hide your face, young lady. Come on up to the podium, introduce yourself, please. Yeah. And we're joined by Principal Mike Calvin. Yes, Duggan's in the house.
Yeah, we have Principal Calvinies and Assistant Principal Sullivan.
We had another Sullivan, too.
Lot of Sullivan's.
Yeah. Principal Calvinies and Vice Principal Sullivan here. My, our apologies, but we wanna hear from you, so please tell me your, tell us all your name.
I'm Christopher Marty.
I'm Chastity Del Rio. I'm Helime Abdalai.
Great. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and esteemed members of the school committee. My name is Christopher Marty, and I am a sixth grade student at Duggan Academy. I absolutely loved my first year so far here at Duggan. And I am honored to announce that Duggan Academy has received the National Magnet School of Distinction Award. As a magnet school, Duggan Academy consists of a diverse mix of students that represents Springfield as a whole. In order to receive this award, Duggan needs to meet four requirements. One, raise student acci-
Academic. I have the same problem, too. Academic. You can do it. Academic.
Academic.
You did it. Okay.
Have done that. Number two, promote racial and socio- socioeconomic-
I have trouble with that one, too.
Diversity. Through our curriculum and our caring and nurturing environment, we work with this every day. Three, provide integrated curriculum and instruction. Our teachers have us reading complex text sets about social justice school issues in all of our classes. Number four, create strong family and community partners. Through our parent events and integrated systems of parent involvement, we have increased the identity of the school and the reputation of Duggan in the community. As for our community partners, we have had dozens of volunteers come into Duggan to help enrich our students' experience at Duggan. As for my experience at Duggan, my teachers push to excel in the classroom every single day. Ms. Gurney, my math teacher, has especially high expectations and has helped improve my math skills by implementing strategies and helping all students hold high expectations for themselves. Outside of the classroom, I have been able to completely immerse myself in the positive culture that is Duggan. I have been involved as a student ambassador since Week One here at Duggan. This means that I organize events, collect student forms, sign students up for enrichments and other PBIS events we have at the school. As a leader in the building, I get to work with amazing kids every day that have allowed me to be myself and show the world my leadership abilities. Mr. Hurley, our Dean of Culture, has empowered me to run community meetings. In these meetings, we celebrate our differences, and my fellow ambassadors and I get to set up events and truly inspire each other to be better. One of my favorite pieces happened today at the community meeting. For Autism Awareness Weeks, students paired up together and spoke out for autism. The feeling in the auditorium was amazing. Duggan has some amazingly skilled students. On February 8th, students competed in a bridge competition in Walburn, Mass. They competed in the old-time card game involving logic and critical thinking against students from Dernham, New Hampshire, and Newton, Mass. Two students from Duggan did amazingly well, coming in second place only to two students who were freshmen in college. The students happened to attend Harvard and MIT.
You give it to them, Duggan. All right.
I dream of being those students someday, and thanks to Duggan-
You will be.
-that might actually happen. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I plan to come back and maybe sit in one of those seats in the future.
We'd love to have you.
The community at Duggan has helped me create relationships that will last in my memory forever. I would like to introduce my fellow ambassador, eighth grader, Chastity Del Rio.
Nice job, Mr. Marty. Chastity? Ms. Del Rio? How are you? Like your hair?
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and members of our amazing school committee. My name is Chastity Del Rio, and I am an eighth grade student at Duggan Academy. I'm sure you're all wondering why I'm dressed as if I'm auditioning for the Glee. But while I am not auditioning for any Broadway shows anytime soon, I did just come from rehearsal for our feature play this year, Between Good and Evil, which I might add will be performed at Duggan Academy at 7:00 PM, Friday, April 7. As a sixth grade student starting at Duggan-
You're doing fine.
As a sixth grade student, starting at Duggan was a scary prospect. I did not speak to anyone for two whole weeks. You could say I was shy. Mr. Sullivan didn't even know who I was until about three quarters of the year. And let me tell you, Mr. Sullivan knows everybody. In sixth grade, school was pretty standard. Students went to class and did their work most of, most of the time, and then went home, and that was about it. Duggan was a, was a good school, but it did not do anything special for our students. We were named a Level Four school that needed to get things under control before we could make the next step happen. And did it ever happen. Going to seventh grade, I expected the same old routine. Go to school, do my work, and have Mr. Sullivan not know me and continue my life as normal. And then everything changed. Mr. Sullivan knew who I was. The school was now under control, and the staff could pay attention to the students who were serious about school, and started to raise the level of expectations in class. The biggest piece that changed that was that the students were now offered enrichments. Enrichment, enrichments are a two-hour block in which students get to explore things they are interested in. I really wanted art, but I decided to join drama without knowing much about it. We were all newbies, and we worked hard to learn, to learn the practice of reading scripts, acting skills, and working together. We performed The Magic Machine at the end of the year, and it was an amazing experience. Ms. Vekion put us through a crash course, and we came through. Drama became something very special to me. This year, we are raising the level even more. Through the help of Mr. Hurley and our drama coach, Ms. Vekion, we are totally set up for success this year. Tomorrow during our play, we have a fully functional light-up setting, brand-new microphones, and a set that looks cool. Next year, thanks to Mr. Calvinies and you guys, we have a brand-new auditorium and a sound system coming in. I am excited to announce that I will be representing the class of 2021 as the, as the first class to go through Duggan from sixth to 12th grade. Through enrichments and great, and great teachers and an amazing group of students around me, I have grown to become a confident and outgoing young woman. Now that, now that the improvements are coming to the building, my fellow Jayhawks and I can really take pride in our culture we are building here at Duggan. If you would like to come see that slice of culture, remember you can stop, come by tomorrow at night at 7:00 PM for the feature, feature presentation, Between Good and Evil. Once again, it is at seven, April 7, at 7:00 PM at Duggan Academy. Go, Jayhawks! Now, our, my fellow eighth grade friends have some words to share.
Nice job, Ms. Del Rio. It looks like you had, you had a game. How'd you do? All right?
I had track.
Practice?
Track.
Track. How'd you do?
Well, they canceled it.
Well, that's true. That's true. Okay, okay. Right. Well, you're that fast. You dodged the raindrops, that's all. Tell us your name, lovely young lady.
Halima.
Halima.
Good evening, Mayor Sarno, Superintendent Warwick, and members of the school committee. My name is Halima Abdalai. I'm an eighth grade student at Duggan Academy. I bet it's a bit weird to see me wearing a varsity track uniform while standing in front of you, but I'll explain all that in a bit. I'm, I am originally from Kakuma, Kenya. I was three years old when I came to Springfield, Massachusetts. My mother-
You're doing fine.
My mother wanted our family to have a better education and more opportunities than we were offered in Kakuma. When I arrived to Duggan Academy, I was just lost. I didn't, I did not quite know what to do with myself, but I was pretty good, I was a pretty good student. As you can probably see, I was quite outgoing. As my year went on, I met, I met some amazing people and saw Duggan start to transform. I figured it was time for me to transform myself as well. In seventh grade, I began playing soccer. This was the first organized sport that I have, I ever, I had ever competed in. And we were good. Our middle school soccer team went undefeated. As winter came, I found myself bored. I needed to do something, so I decided to try out for middle school basketball. I have never touched a basketball before. After a year of traveling, double dribbling, and definitely following, I started to figure it all out. Once again, my girls' basketball team went undefeated. Going to eighth grade year, I was excited to start playing ba-
Halima, can I say something? Their basketball team, which was comprised of eighth graders, made the Western Mass Tournament. Unbelievable. With eighth graders.
Going to eighth grade year, I was excited to start playing soccer and basketball for the middle schools again, but then I realized a few things had changed. Our uniform colors had went, had changed from red to maroon. We were traveling out of Springfield to play teams, and the girls were much bigger. This was varsity. At Duggan Academy, any student from seventh to eleventh grade is eligible to play on the varsity team. During our soccer season, we did not go undefeated. However, we played hard and competed in every game, tied one game. Despite having to learn how it feels to lose, next year we will reload and be back and ready to rock. Basketball was a different story. I started the season not playing much. As the season went on, we started to all get better. As we improved, we started to win some games. By the end of the season, I was playing regular minutes. I didn't travel anymore. I became a lockdown defender. The following part was still there. I've gotta figure that out. As a group of 10 eighth graders, a ninth grader, and one seventh grader, we made the playoffs. Unfortunately, our season ended a little, a little bit short, but next year we will be competing for a Western Mass title.
All right.
Playing sports at the varsity level in eighth grade has helped me learn how to structure my time. The balance between classes and work on the field is challenging. In two years, my lady Jayhawks and I will be scoring goals on a brand-new soccer field. Next winter, my basketball teammates will not travel anymore because we are getting a brand-new gym floor that our sneakers will, will actually stop on. Sports at Duggan has helped change the culture of the school, and I can't wait for next year. I am proud to call myself a Jayhawk for the next four years, as I will be continuing my education at Duggan Academy. Thank you.
Nice job. Great job, everyone. I believe that concludes our middle school students' speak-out. We'll have a one-minute recess. You're more than welcome to stay before we go into our formal meeting. Thank you so much.
Good evening. We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Present.
Here.
Yes, Mike, please clarify again that school committee men Norman Roland and school committee woman Rosa Pobert send their regrets to both that family functions this evening. If we could all please rise for a moment of silence and then to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. We'll now move to approval of the minutes of March 23, 2017, regular school committee meeting. Any questions or comments? Say again, any questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by, uh, motion by Ms. Gresham. Is her second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Attorney Murphy. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, aye. The ayes have it. Items requiring a vote of the school committee. A is to approve a Springfield diploma for Jonathan Colazo. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Jonathan has completed all the graduation requirements. Dr. Johnson certified everything graduated, completing all the requirements, but not a district placement, recommending we approve a diploma for him.
Thank you, Superintendent Warwick. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hersch. Is her second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Gresham?
Yes.
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 Yes. More than sufficient votes. Matter passes. Congratulations, Mr. Colazo. B is to approve a collective bargaining agreement between the Springfield Public Schools between the Springfield Public Schools and Custodians. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor. We talked a couple times in executive sessions, and the school committee approved the contract offer to the custodians. It's been accepted and ratified by the custodians. So bringing it forward for approval from the school committee tonight.
I'd like to thank my Labor Director, Bill Mahoney, and Melissa Shea, and the rest of the internal team, Pat Roach, and everybody that worked on this to come to a plausible, fair agreement for both sides of the issue. Any other questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to Attorney Mahoney. I reached out to him for some questions I had, and he answered my questions, so I was grateful for that.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Collins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. More sufficient votes. Matter passes. Thank you very much. C is to approve bringing for consideration a naming of the Sheet Metal Shop at Putnam Vocational Technical Academy in honor of the late School Committee Woman, Antoinette Pepe, to the Buildings and Maintenance Subcommittee. Superintendent Warwick?
Yeah, we talked about this at the last meeting, the opportunity. This was mentioned from the floor. And bringing it up, as you know, if we're going to name something, it starts in the general committee, goes to subcommittee, and then comes back. So we'd like to start the process with that. I don't know if Chair of that subcommittee wanted to speak to it.
No, there's been several requests. And the most recent one was at the hearing where we talked about Judge Boyle, where the public said, brought it up again.
And I assume at the appropriate time, we will be making some accolades and comments pertaining to the late Ms. Pepe. But any other questions or comments right now? Okay. Is there a motion on the floor? Motion by Ms. Hersch. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham. Roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. More sufficient votes. Matter passes. Thank you. Another well-acknowledged, our former colleague. D is to approve bringing for consideration a naming of the Library of Putnam Vocational Technical Academy in honor of the late Michael P. Rogers to the Building and Maintenance Subcommittee. And as this goes forward, before I turn it over to Superintendent Warwick, the much-deserved reasons will be given why, what these individuals did for the schools, and especially the students behind the scenes. Superintendent Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this also came forward. Spoke to Chris Collins about it. You know, Michael was very instrumental in moving the project at Putnam forward as a member of the school committee. Worked really hard at it, really proud of the project. And when we almost lost the Putnam project, Michael was very, very instrumental at that time with the treasurer to make sure we moved that project forward. Longtime school committee person, and volunteered extensively at Putnam. So I'd like to turn it over to Chris Collins from that subcommittee.
I agree with everything Mr. Warwick said. And additionally, actually, one of the people who mentioned it was the former treasurer, who himself brought up the fact that you would have lost that funding if Michael hadn't set up a meeting in my office. So it was the former treasurer, another one, who brought it forward, seeing that we should give it consideration.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? And again, at the appropriate time for Ms. Pepe and Mr. Rogers, I think more accolades will come out. Hearing none. Is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chair Attorney Peter Murphy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Hersch. Roll call votes required. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. More sufficient votes. Matter passes. Thank you very much. We'll now move to informational discussion items. So Desco is in the House in Food Waste Management for the STEM Education. Superintendent Warwick?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a neat project that they're going to brief us on tonight, but we have Mark Jeffries here, Tim Gray, and John Alvin that are working on a project together that's kind of neat. So I'd like them to tell you about it tonight.
Well, can I talk to you from here so I can run this?
You certainly may.
It's a pleasure to talk to you. I have been working for you for 10 years as your recycling coordinator, your house management manager of all our school buildings and our municipal buildings, as well as the environmental coordinator. For the last year plus, I've been a Sedexo employee. That's broadened a lot of what we can do. Myself, Patrick's came in the house, and we've put money together to do a lot of things that we got out of the USDA grant and one of the serving composting program. And that was pushed along by this project, which Sedexo North America has been doing these really cool STEM middle school educational videos, where they pose a problem, they stop the video, and then they have the students talk about it. And then they come back and show what the Sedexo employee put in for this problem to be. Now, the individuals that work in that career field talk about their career paths. So we're going to look at this one that we did. So happy we've chosen to do this at all schools across North America that they work with. They've been here in Springfield.
Les. And quick shout-out to Desco, too. The Junior Chef Program at Putnam Vocational Technical Academy was just absolutely fantastic.
Really great.
Landfills annually, causing pollution to our air, land, and water. How can Sedexo, a leader in health, wellness, and environmental sustainable services, help their clients decrease the amount of waste that contributes to landfills by 2025?
My name is Christina. I'm the director of sustainability performance and field support for Sedexo North America. Sedexo has a responsibility to be a frontline citizen. We have a responsibility to improve the quality of life on our employees and the communities where we operate. Reducing food waste and fighting hunger have all the approaches through which we live our mission. Our Stop Hunger program was launched in 1996, and last year redistributed the equipment through the food community.
It's estimated that a third of the planet's food goes to waste, and that's nearly 2 billion of the Earth's population, nearly seven and a half billion people.
I'm responsible for providing the training, education, and the resources that are required for our managers across our 850 sites in North America to take action on sustainability practices we have. Sedexo site is very different across the country. You might be in a hospital, you could be in a corporate environment, you could be watching a baseball game at a triple-digit game, or you could be in a bar today, right here at Springfield Public Schools in Springfield, Massachusetts. Sedexo is Springfield, Massachusetts, as partner in Sedexo's food and facilities management team to reduce waste. This is an internal waste product, and China might as well quantify specifically which that is being discarded.
A waste product is an analysis of a facility's waste stream. It can identify what types of recyclable materials and waste a facility generates, and how much of each category is recovered for recycling or discarded.
An app is important because it allows you to locate your entire waste stream and to see what it consists of. You're able to locate food waste that's there, metals, plastics that can be recycled, well, corn, which you also can carry around with you. After analyzing the data of the food waste product, Sedexo must provide recommendations to the school district on how to reduce waste. Here's your challenge. Help Sedexo identify opportunities to reduce food waste from going into the landfill.
Good stuff to take. Kids were talking about this.
Using the food waste methods in Duggan, review and analyze the data and develop your own recommendations for the Springfield School District. As you work through the problem, be sure to consider the following: What are some waste reduction actions each of the following categories could influence? Students, food service, custodial staff, school administration. You may also utilize the Environmental Protection Agency food recovery hierarchy to learn about different management strategies for waste and food.
As a result of our food waste program, we know we should increase our food donations, increase our recycling program, but also implement an effective organic subversion program. In order to have an effective program where we can truly eliminate the waste of food and energy from that system, one example of an organic subversion program is the small composting program at Sedexo's Seddell School. They also want to reduce waste. It's a vision of their teachers, the school system, and their students.
The reason here at Seddell School, started the garden and compost program.
Composting is the scientific process of breaking down organic matter, such as leaves and food scraps, into a valuable resource to make healthy soil ideal to grow more food.
This is a new program in a smaller school where we can do onsite composting. They actually take the materials from the kitchen and bring it out and put it in the composter. And then they add a combination of materials like the leaves to give us a 15/50 mix of weeds to the freeway.
So this is a mixture of fruits and vegetables, and we're going to put the leaves on composting so that there's less waste. The land this week will come out immediately.
Compost goes into all of our gardens. We can't grow anything organically without food soil. The soil is built by the public. But annually, we take compost out of the compost bin, put it in our beds, hope in the fall when we do our cover crops, and in the spring before we plant the irises all at first. At Seddell School, our organic program is hoping to divert some of the 25% that we know the waste stream contains of organic waste. Hopefully, we can capture that percentage that would make a major difference at our farm when we go to pay for our trash to get disposed of.
Beneath the composting is a significant finding for the arts. Some additional recommendations that can involve the participation of students, food service, custodial staff, and school administration include adjusting food purchasing orders to eliminate unconsumed food, reviewing for adjusting portion sizes, batch cooking, frameless dining, limiting access nutritious foods to community shelters or food banks, and donating food scraps for animal feed. What are your recommendations compared to Sedexo's recommendations?
I'm Christina, I'm the director of sustainability performance and field support for Sedexo North America.
My name is Tom Williams.
Hey, Tommy.
I'm John Alvin. I'm Sedexo's sustainability manager, working with the Springfield Public Schools.
My name is Donna Murphy. I'm tired of the sleep talk.
What can be wrong in this manner to those hearing? The way you're talking about water and your composting. And so moved me that I went back on to the first cycle to female accounts.
I had the same idea that most kids have restaurants, hotels, cruise ships, just about that, and there's the mirrors, and it's on TV. What makes it different? It's a lot different. I love Sedexo because it's just going to make a different ability to work with food for the students, for management, as opposed to hands-on operation. I really enjoy that part.
I became employed with Sedexo as a food service worker, and I worked high-staffed, so we need to work. I mean, there's 17 people, and we provide food for 100 students every day. We write down every piece of food item that we prepare, that we cook. And at the end of the day, whatever is left over is a power tool. My responsibility is to know what the children like and not have a lot of extra waste.
When the students are interested in a job like mine, everyone's paying attention in Chinese class, and they're lining up Chinese class. And I would ask them a long scare if you're a recycling committee or anything in the school. I would be pleased if you called and looked for courses that want to give you that and give you the chance to do a work that you need to do or parents can do.
If you're looking to get into food service, what I suggest it would be start volunteering where this food can be serviced, whether it be a homeless shelter or open-handed kitchen. So facilities, always looking for help as well.
I was just like applying to a food company, so I was just a local surgery program. Those types of programs are out there. There's a dishwash at that, one of the local restaurants.
Sedexo is imperative to food waste for many reasons. One of the emerging trends that I'm seeing right now is this idea about disruptive technology. People are creating these apps that connect food that's going to be wasted to feed the hungry. So this is a really cool way to think about technology. It literally intends to solve this ongoing issue of food waste reduction.
The United States Department of Agriculture estimates that over 57,000 careers in the food, agriculture, renewable natural resources, and environmental fields will become available annually in the United States. More than 23,000 of the jobs will be in STEM areas, food and vital materials production. Most of the jobs will require data analysis, a PCL used to solve this food waste challenge. If you encounter challenges like this, consider careers that will be offered here at Sedexo. Technical engineer, chef, dietitian, sustainability coordinator, facilities manager.
Very good. Restake.
So I'm going to hand out a little brochures about the 20-plus gardens that we have. Every one of the students that come to our program did an extensive training on composting.
Thanks, John.
And I'm glad to say that after a lot of year of working on this, we've walled out our first organics diversion in our six largest schools that do the most preparation of meals for our system. Some of these schools prepare meals for other schools where they're at. And those schools are Putnam, where we do the culinary institute shop as well, Central High School, Kennedy, Johnson, Ridley Childhood Development, where the food for 15/50 comes from as well, and many other schools just up middle. And we also have an elaborate cutting room at Chestnut, where we are cutting fresh fruits and vegetables every day, when the longer vine stuff pre-packed somewhere else. And I'm talking about putting up fresh pineapples. This stuff is really good-looking fruits and vegetables. We have a lot of waste in that. So those particular schools are filling a 2-yard container. We've only been doing this for two months. And 2-yard container costs us $115 per month. We pick it up four times once a week, four times a month. If that's full, for every time that we divert, we're saving $78. We're not sending it to a man to be burned. So a full compost container each week is four tons, and we're avoiding $312. Subtract the $115 cost, it's $197 we're saving by this program. Now, this is a pilot. We're not filling all of them yet. Some of them are. But even if we're only filling them halfway, we're still making money on this. And the hope is, and this is back of the house, it's not in the cafeteria. Some of the cafeteria stuff is done in some of our smaller schools, like Seddell Middle. These are containers that are picked up by a company and it's taken to weight into a farm to be composted. So far, this looks really good. Hopefully, we'll be increasing this. Big thanks to, again, that was John, but to Mike Jeffries for making this money available to us to start this project. Because without these pilots, we've done everything we've done, from the chemical management to going to single stream, and this is how it gets started.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
I have to say that Desco's been a great corporate citizen and very progressive, not only with the quality of food and what they have, but their participation in our community. And I don't know through the superintendent as well, is this something that we could put on focus, Springfield?
Yes, we did.
Okay, so it has been on. Okay. I was just in.
And I'm looking forward to this. We have a lot of curriculum that we've been developing since the USDA grant. And again, thank you, Pat, and thank you, Mark, for putting my team together that we have with this USDA grant. It could all come tumbling down, but they found the money to keep this team together. So we all this winter, for the first time ever, we've been in the school doing all of this curriculum that we've developed with the science department. It's very exciting. I'm going nowhere but upwards with all of that. And again, thanks a lot to you.
Mr. Superintendent, can I ask, are we probably one of the first urban school districts doing this?
I don't know of any others.
Of urban school districts doing? You know, most of it's happening in Western Mass in the boot box, as far as the organic. But you're doing really good programs that have been established and I learned a lot from these people. They're friends of mine who've been working for 40 years. We sit on the Urban Advisory Board together. And it's, you know, how we got this affordable was through my connections to them. The waste management gave us a price that was twice what we ended up paying.
But again, Springfield taking the lead as well.
Yes, I think we're one of the only ones. Yes, I think we're one of the only ones, and I'm kind of very proud of the fact that one of the only ones was, um, as large a garden as we have, Kennedy Middle School, and as many, uh, of the schools. Uh, some of them have been USD grant, they're a little good too. Uh, we have a lot to be proud of, uh, and again, to keep this team together, going nowhere but upwards.
Thank you. Any questions or comments, Ms. Hurst?
This is, this is really awesome, actually. I wanted to know, is, so all of the schools on this brochure, do they all get this curriculum? Do they all go through this exercise?
Uh, we, we get, no, actually, what I'm using with them is something I've been teaching again for three-plus years, it's safety. Uh, the figure one is in, we teach them all the triggers that are in a compost situation, from the bacteria up to the little different cycles and things. So it's very in-depth on, um, composting. Then we go out and we build compost piles and our gardens. Every fall, we take all of the, uh, crops off, they all go into the, um, composter. In the springtime, we harvest that and put it back on. So we're organic everywhere, and the kids understand what this means from that original training. We've not, we just got this and we haven't used it yet, but in that time, since we've had this, I can't tell you how many composting, I mean, recycling, um, presentation, I did one just last night because of Calhoun Middle School. Uh, and I'm looking forward to using this because what this does that I've not been doing is giving kids a nice year of the job opportunities that they have to teach.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anything other questions or comments?
Just, it's nice to see us kind of returning to roots. It's, uh, if you recall, before we acquiesced to the convenience of throwaway society, when we went to school, Mayor, you had plastic plates and you put all the garbage. All the farmers used to come to the schools and pick up the waste and take it back and use it for feeding pigs and for compost. It's nice to see us returning to some things that our aunts, that our earlier citizens did, that made sense.
Yeah, and we're, we're heading in that way, when you mentioned that one, um, getting less styrofoam in the system, going back to washing trays. Awesome, I think. Tamara, are you still here? Uh, we, we have an amazing team. I, um, have worked for ten years and I watch blips in my solid waste. And it's largely due to what happens in food service. If the state asks us to put, uh, fruit and vegetable on everybody's plate, boom, there's a little jerk up, and we go, uh, whole week, a little jerk up. And once these kids learn to eat these things and enjoy them, they're eating. And, you know, some people say, oh, the waste, and I'll say, no, we're changing kids' lives. These kids are gonna grow up, um, kids that come into my garden, they're eating kale, walk out of the garden and compare themselves and whatnot, things that they would not do. And Tamara, I mean, that's all, in depth.
Very good. Uh, Mr. Collins, spoken like a true longtime Conservation Committee member and chairman, so I wasn't surprised, uh, with those, with those comments. Any other questions or comments?
If I can just say something, Mayor, just credit to our team, uh, Tim, Pat Roach, our partners from Sedexo, just constantly doing a great job moving the program forward. And, and this awareness is so important, and I think the styrofoam piece, yeah, all the trash we put in with the styrofoam, hiring people actually wash the trays and reuse the plates, it makes so much sense, so. But our, the quality of what we're preparing for the kids now with the fruits and vegetables is a huge step forward, so our team has really done a great job. And we're cutting edge on this as well as everything else. We're gonna have thirty-three Healthy Start Awards later for the Breakfast and Lunch Program. So it's, uh, credit to the team, they've just done a great job in every way. And it's great for our kids and great for our city. And I think the help with you with the warehouse, so we can prepare everything locally is gonna make a big difference too, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Superintendent Warwick, I appreciate it. Thank you, Sedexo. We're also joined by that fearless managing editor from Reminder, Mike Dobbs. Mike, we appreciate you, uh, being here to report on the good things that are happening in the city of Springfield and our Springfield Public School system. You didn't think I saw you in the corner over there? That means you get detention, this is a school committee meeting. We're now gonna move to some other good news about our Springfield Public Schools, the graduation and dropout report. Superintendent Warwick, please.
Thank you, Mayor, we had real good news. Uh, the state released the information on the graduation on dropout for this year for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And Springfield, over the last five years, has had the largest decrease in the dropout rate in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so it's very exciting. Cutting it to less than half, from ten down to four-point-nine. Now, when you're talking about the, the four-year cohort graduation rate in Massachusetts, it's the percentage of students who graduate with a diploma within four years after entering ninth grade from a Massachusetts school. So, and they must meet not only the exit requirements relative to coursework, but the, the MCAS requirement. When talking about the dropout rate, it's not a four-year calculation, it's a one-year calculation. It's the number of students who drop out within that academic year. So this is for two thousand and fifteen, sixteen school year. So, uh, when you see the four-year cohort graduation rate, you can see the trend is up in every area. We're up overall, we're up twelve-point-two percent overall in the last five years, so double-digit gains. More importantly, you see it right across the schools, all the schools are up. Noteworthy in some of the schools, again, it's great news across the board, but Commerce was up eleven-point-two percent just this past year, and twenty-two-point-eight percent since two thousand and twelve, so that's rather incredible. SciTech is also up almost twenty percent. So some of the gains are remarkable, but you can see the trend right across the board. We're moving in the right direction on the graduation rate. And again, overall, twelve-point-two percent in the last five years. The rates by subgroup are even better news. As you look across the different subgroups, the gains are really spectacular. You can see the ELL population, our English Language Learners, up twenty-three-point-one percent in the last five years. As you go across high needs, low income, the results are great. And in the next slide, the, the different demographics, you can see every group, the African-American, Asian, Hispanic-Latino group up seventeen-point-three percent in the last five years. So, really encouraging across all the subgroups as well. Now dropout rate, as you, you could see the overall, ten down to four-point-nine, and it's a cut in less than half, and again, the best improvement in the Commonwealth. You can see it across all the schools, so moving in a positive direction at every school, really, uh, important. You can, you know, one I'd like to point out is, because sometimes SciTech doesn't get credit, eleven-point-six down to four-point-three percent last year in the last five years, so huge improvements there. Now, in the next breakout, again, LEP, cutting, cutting it less than half, uh, but all across, students with disabilities, low income, high needs. And on the next page, across the demographic groups, you see the, the same trend. African-American, Black, less than half, Hispanic-Latino, almost half. So really good, good improvements, but the most important thing, it's across all of our subgroups, and really moving in the right direction. And on the last, uh, next page, you're gonna see, um, by grade level. And you can see the dropouts, there's a spread across the grade levels. But most importantly, you can see the huge decrease at every grade level. And on the last page, you're gonna see just, uh, the dropouts shown in numbers, so you can get the magnitude of the number of kids that, uh, were dropping out as compared to who is dropping out in the different groups right now. So it's a very positive story. Again, uh, we were part of the state, uh, press release because we had the best results in the state relative to improvement there. I was very, very proud of, of the improvements the team has made. It's a, it's a great credit to our principals, our teachers across the district. And I'm gonna call out one person specifically, Dr. Yolanda Johnson, who's really been at the heart of this work. And she's here today. I was wondering, Yolanda, if you'd mind coming up and talking about a few of the key strategies, if you don't mind.
Always behind the scenes, Yolanda, we wanna hear from you.
I, I must say, I, I have to say this because, um, you know, we started this work, I mean, back at one ninety-five Stage Street, um, when we really were trying to really wrap our heads around, how can we improve this metric? I mean, there was a time where we were losing almost nine hundred kids a year. And, um, it was ve- a very uncomfortable feeling because it was massive. And I must say that I, I have to always go back to, um, um, Superintendent Warwick. At the time, he was an assistant superintendent, and we literally worked on this together, student by student, I'd go to his office with all this paper and, um, and sit with him. And, um, and it was from there that we really started to, you know, work with our schools. I mean, you know, you, you had the assistant superintendent sitting with you in meetings with principals and, and teachers, and really talking about how we can, um, can, can work on improving this. So we really started looking at strategies on how to really support students with being more successful before they failed a class. And, um, so we started looking at grade nine because that's where our highest retention rate was. And, um, we did some research and really looked at evidence-based practices, research, and that's birthed the ninth-grade academy. Um, so we went from the ninth-grade academy, and at the same time, we looked at strategies such as online credit recovery, um, and, and really implemented online credit recovery and, um, provided students with opportunity to have teacher-directed instruction as well as, um, work in a digital learning environment to demonstrate mastery in their courses. We hired graduation coaches because we also recognized, based on the research, that relationships were so important. You know, kids, you know, um, don't drop out of school because they don't like math. You know, students really are, um, looking to develop relationships when they're having barriers to why they're not being successful. So, um, we, we, you know, started off with two graduation coaches that were split between, um, our schools, SciTech, Putnam, and Commerce, and now we have graduation coaches in all of our comprehensive high schools. And then we also looked at, um, prior, we, we worked on DOOs, um, our drop-out early warning indicators. And I, I, I look at Bob because he teased me one time, it's like, you want all this paper? Because I had all this stuff on why, trying to, you know, make the case for why we needed to have dropout early warning indicators starting in elementary school. So I, you know, I had to be prepared to make the case. And, um, he teased me, but we, today, we have, you know, um, an early warning system that allows us to really proactively look at students and really try to address, um, um, academic and behavior, um, concerns before they get to high school. And then we, um, really revamped night school opportunities, um, summer school opportunities, and I'm sure I'm missing something, um, okay, I'm...
One hundred, one hundred males to college?
One hundred males to college, so interesting, because when the state approached us about it, it really was a natural fit, because if you looked at the date, if you look at the data, our males graduate at lower rates than our females, and our males drop out at higher rates than our females. So with the class of two thousand and sixteen, our seniors in one hundred males to college all graduated, you know? So that was, um, that's what you're doing here at City Hall with my brother's keeper. So, you know, we really just tried to engage in meaningful and intentional strategies that really support the overall goals. And I, I have to just say it again, we go to the state meetings, and usually no one, you know, they don't wanna talk to Springfield, you know, because we, we...
Now they do though, now they do.
But, you know, Springfield Public Schools is highlighted at some of these, um, dropout work group meetings. And we're seen as a resource, and the school districts will always say, well, how did you do that? And how are you able to, to, to implement such strategies? And I do always go back to our leadership here. Our leadership has allowed us to really, um, collaborate in ways that never, ever happened before. Um, to really, um, even before I got here, you know, academic directors and us talking about students and how we can help them, um, looking at MCAS appeals and, and really digging into, not only is it about credit attainment, but it's about meeting the competency determination on our state assessment, and really making sure we're not missing students where we can have an appeal so that they graduate with a diploma. Because every student that walks across our stage with a certificate of attainment counts, doesn't count for us. So we really dug really deep, and we were really meaningful. And I must say, um, you know, I, I, I'm just appreciative of, of the opportunity that our superintendent has provided, and, you know, we're working hard, it's not over. We know every year, we're always wondering how we're doing, um, but we will continue this work. And it's harder, the state has recognized it, the state has even acknowledged that the students that we're working with now are harder to kind of help them make it across the stage. And that's refreshing to know, because when you do so well, you know, you're always, you know, wondering when will it kind of plateau? Um, but the state has really put together a nice team at, um, in Malden that really understands the work that we're doing here, and, um, and we're, we're always gonna keep working hard. And so I thank you, Superintendent.
We appreciate you, Dr. Johnson, and tell Vani I said hello too. Any questions or comments?
Great job, Yolanda. I was at the high school completion program today, and another program we started a few years ago that Yolanda was at the heart of, and a lot of our kids that were having difficulty now are, are assigned to that program and completing a lot of their courses online. And, uh, it was really going great. So it's just another innovative piece with our alternative schools, to try to find a solution for every child, but it's made a big difference, so thank you for your great work.
Maybe someday that building will be named the Daniel J. Warwick Reengagement Center.
Oh, jeez.
Nothing wrong with that. Okay. We'll now move to C, uh...
Can we table that one for next time?
Yes. Uh, C will be tabled, we'll have more good news coming. So we'll now move the reports of standing committees, student relation, parents. Thank you, Ms. Gresham. B is Building and Maintenance Committee.
No report.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. C is Legislative and Contracts Committee.
That's Norman, right?
I believe that's Mr. Rolan again, he's at a family engagement. D is Curriculum and Programs Committee.
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Hurst. E is Budget and Finance Committee, Mr. Collins.
Um, Pat Roach sent out a very good synopsis of the budget. Everybody take, take a chance the next couple of days to, uh, go through it. We do have a, a meeting scheduled next Wednesday. So, you know, feel free to come, even though it's a subcommittee meeting, anybody can come and ask questions. Uh, if you can't make it, then you can either call Pat to get the answers, or if not, just send them to me and I'll make sure that he gets them and gets back to you. That's the twelfth, I think you're correct.
Maybe we should put Pat's cellphone on the, uh, you know, on the, uh, cable TV channel so that, you know, you can call him directly about any questions that they might have.
It's five-thirty.
Display it on the, uh, you're just, sort of an outreach.
It's the twelfth at five-thirty, Mrs. Gresham, remind me, I didn't say the time in play.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any other questions or comments besides Vice Chair Peter Murphy's distinctive, uh, issues? Okay, here, thank you, Mr. Collins. Been a long week. Uh, we'll move the Locational Education Committee.
That's Norman.
Mr. Rolan again is at Family Function and Technology Committee. I believe that's, is that Rosa, that's Rosa, she's at a family function. School Safety Committee.
No reports, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham. Okay, we'll now move to the report of the Superintendent, Superintendent Warwick, please.
Yeah, we have some more good news, and I think Sedexo was here earlier, and I recognize them, and Pat Roach for the work, but, uh, the EOS Foundation that has really sponsored the Breakfast in the Classroom and a lot of the changes statewide in the quality of the lunch and breakfast program, they're giving out awards Thursday, May fifth, at the State House, and Springfield has thirty-three schools getting awards, and you have a list in your desk for the Breakfast in the Classroom program. We've really, uh, you know, led the way on this, we were recognized, uh, first in the state last year, and, uh, we've got Breakfast in the Classroom moving across the entire district. And, uh, it's just been wonderful, really healthy breakfast for all of our kids. You know, hopefully, uh, you know, a lot less kids going home sick because they didn't get a healthy breakfast, and a good start to the school day, so it's been a real positive development. It's nice to see the recognition.
Superintendent, if I may, Central High School, wasn't that a first?
First high school in the Commonwealth, and twenty-one hundred kids, so rather incredible. And again, a lot of logistical work had to be done there, because people had just done this at the elementary level. Nobody tried it in a twenty-one-hundred-seat high school, but, uh, we've done it and done it well, and everyone's been excited about it, it's been great for our kids. Now we're moving to our other high schools with it as well, but it's really been a good, uh, good piece for the city of Springfield. And again, a healthy breakfast, healthy start to the day. I think it's getting kids on time and off to a, a good start, and it's really been received well. And it is, it is, um, something to organize, uh, and again, I think Sedexo's been a great partner in, in making sure we organize it, because it requires us to put a, you know, a piece together for every classroom in the school. So when you're talking about Central High School, you're, you're talking about hundreds. But, uh, it's really been executed well, executed in a timely way. Uh, custodial staff has done a great job cleaning up, and it's been great for our kids. And we, we definitely the, the trendsetter with that one, because, uh, having thirty-three schools getting an award at the State House is pretty cool. But, uh, if you go see it every day, it's really something, something to see. Now some of our other high schools are jumping in too, so it's been great for our, our kids. We have an attendance report in your package as well. As you can see, uh, as you follow it across, right now, we're a little down from last year, and you can follow it all, all... you can follow it all through the different levels, and the truancy piece, a little bit up, this has been something going on in the Commonwealth, there was a really tough flu, so all the Urdens right now are, you know, the attendance suffered a little bit, and we are too, but we're working at that. And there's also a contracts report in your package, so if you have any questions with the contracts report, Patrick Roach or I could answer them for you, so.
Any other questions, the Superintendent Warwick's report? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to unfinished business. Say again, unfinished business. Hearing none, we'll move to new business. Ms. Gresham.
Thank you. On behalf of the Springfield Exchange Club, I want to thank you all for your support last year, and we're doing the same thing this year, and we are honoring, or giving scholarship to two students, two high school students, one is from the High School of Commerce, and one is from Central. The event is on April twenty-ninth, if you'd like to support us this year, I have tickets, and it's a nice event. We also will be honoring a police officer and a fireman, and it's going to be at the start in West Springfield.
Barbara, if for some reason I cannot attend, like you did last, can you get information so we can donate again to it?
Sure, sure. And it's a nice event, so, you know, we'd like you to come, because we have dancing with
Dancing.
It'll be fun.
Sauce her.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gresham and Exchange Club. Any other new business? Okay, hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hurst, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gresham, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed, the ayes have it. Thank you very much, thank you for watching, and good evening.